And since the Pledge of Allegiance was a little bit of a nightmare last week or two weeks ago, I hope you all don't mind if we forego that this evening. And, oh, oh, Daniel's sharing the agenda. Thank you.
No problem.
Were there any additions or amendments to the agenda? During them, we'll move forward. Do we have any visitors that are not otherwise on the agenda later? Daniel? I don't think so.
No, I don't see.
Great. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes and the warrant. Daniel, do you want to speak to the minutes briefly?
Yeah, so we've been very busy, as you can imagine, it's well remotely doing city hall work. That being said, Morgan's been the only one at city hall of the past two weeks, doing all of this essential items that need to get done, deposits, mailings, you know, cutting checks, those things. So she's working on the minutes. She hasn't completed them yet. So if we could please hold off for one meeting, that would be greatly appreciated. And again, it's due to the chaos that is going on.
Has she finished washing the windows yet, too?
She's an all star. Thanks, Morgan.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Did anyone have any questions on the warrants?
Are we paying off the police vehicle in one year with a $10,000 first order? If it was only a $40,000 vehicle?
Yeah. Yep. Well, it's five payments. So it's like, it's like, it's like 50 with interest with the with financing charges.
We're paying that quarterly or paying that yearly?
Annually.
Hey, okay.
Yeah, so this was the first. So they ordered the police vehicle and normally I wouldn't buy anything this time of year with what's going on. This would have been one of the things I halted. However, they ordered this vehicle like last August or something.
Yeah, that's fine. It just the way it's listed in the warrants, it seemed like it was a quarterly payment. It was like Q1 or Q2, and I just wasn't sure if we were doing that each quarter.
Nope, that's gonna be every June.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Moving right along to item four, since I don't believe we have any other citizens on the line, I'm going to assume we have no citizen comments.
Mr. Mayor, can I just add one thing?
Yes.
The warrants after this meeting, I will send them electronically for everyone to sign again, like I did the last warrants, but this time it'll be on the meeting date.
Great, thank you. That works very well. Moving on to business. Item 5A, formal selection of alternative plan for the wastewater treatment plant.
So Dexter, you should be able to share your.
Yeah, I think I can. Let's see. Where is it? Show all windows. Well, let's see. What if I go like this? Can you see it now?
No.
No. Doesn't show up. For some reason, the PowerPoint does not appear in my. Oh, wait a minute. Let's try this. There we go.
You got it.
Yep.
Okay.
From the beginning. So let's see. Here's our opening slide. Now, I don't think we have anybody new here from last time. So there's a little bit of overlap in this presentation from two weeks ago. So I'm gonna skip over that unless somebody objects and go right into the wastewater treatment part of the project. And go there. Don't need to tell you about us. So the overall, the project has two objectives. Two weeks ago, we discussed the first one, which is eliminating the overflows and the long-term control plan. Tonight, we'll deal with the second aspect, upgrade the aging wastewater treatment facility. This slide is about the collection system. I'll skip over that. That's a map of the collection system. Some of the collection system costs that I've added. But this is where the treatment facility section starts. This is a aerial mapping of the existing wastewater treatment plant. It consists of headworks, which is here. And that's where all the wastewater coming into the plant goes through the headworks. Inside the headworks, there's a screen and some grit removal equipment. The screen takes out floating objects and large objects. The grit removal removes heavy, large particles like sand and gravel. Flow from the headworks proceeds to lagoons, Lagoon 1, then to Lagoon 2. These are super primary lagoons, which are unique from standard area lagoons in that they have a much shorter detention time. They hold the water for about seven days instead of 30 days, which would be a typical lagoon. That's why they're called super primary lagoons. They only provide primary treatment. And then the currently the wastewater from lagoons flows through a filtration building, which is some disk filters, then to chlorine contact tanks, then to the Otter Creek somewhere over in this area. I also wanted to add that there's this called an aerobic digestion tank. So the solids that are removed or produced in the filtration building are stored in this tank. And they're hauled away periodically for disposal. I think they usually go to Middlebury. Any questions about the existing facility? I need to go back. So these charts summarize the flows and loadings to the plants. The existing total flow to the, the total design flow is 750,000 gallons per day, 0.75 million gallons per day, which we call MGD. These are design values. You see the actual values are in the next table 4-8. And in table 4-9, we compare design to actual. And just in general, the flows are at about two-thirds of capacity. So there is reserve capacity in the plant. Plant's overloaded in the maximum month for flow. Looks like for everything. That's not really a concern because all the assumptions we've used to upgrade the treatment plant make the assumption that we will remove the excess water from the system that causes the overflows at McDonough and also cause the overloads at the treatment plant.
So that sounds like a guarantee. Is it or will it be?
It's not quite a guarantee. It's, it's an objective. It's, but it's a firm.
I'm just wondering about going ahead with too much detail if we don't know what the, what the first problem's gonna, gonna entail.
Because the cost of doing anything else is much greater than the cost of doing that.
Okay.
So we've got a $5 million allowance to remove the infiltration. And the cost of treating it or storing it and treating it, which is what we'd have to do, is much greater. So that's why the decision was made to go forward with that assumption.
Okay.
Dexter, your question. I'm happy to take questions as I go along.
Yeah, Dexter looked at, looked at a holding tank by the McDonough pump station, right?
Yes.
And how much, how much was? There's a lot.
Yeah, do we have those alternatives in here?
There used to be a dam on Potash Brook for a public skating rink. And that would, and you could have an open pond there. But that's probably not legal, is it?
No. It would be legal. But the site constraints over there are really extreme. I could jump out of this and I think I have.
No, that's fine. It was, it was like, it was like a million something dollars just to put a.
It was several million. Yeah.
Yeah, just to put a tank big enough to hold the overflows. And then that might not even solve the problem.
And where would that tank go?
And that's another thing. Yeah.
So there was, there was some space. Yeah, I don't know. I can't find, I guess there may files open. Sorry.
It would ruin the area. It's okay.
Yeah, that's true, too.
Back to the PowerPoint. Yeah, it was gonna be more expensive. And the other thing is it doesn't really mean, it would, you'd still be in, we would design it for a five-year storm, which would mean you would still occasionally have overflows. So not only was it more expensive, it didn't completely solve the problem. So this focuses on the heart of the plant, the biological treatment portion of the plant. And these are the options that we looked at. Since last, since our last meeting, we've added a new option, which is super primary lagoon. This has been added sort of at the suggestion of the operator. And I think also there was suggestion from the state that this might be an option worth looking at. We didn't look at it in the beginning because the disk filters that exist are really problematic. And the primary lagoon is kind of an odd technology that's not really used maybe ever often. There's, I think, only one remaining super primary lagoon besides Virgens in the state. And that's at Sugar Bush for much smaller flow. But anyway, we did add that option in. And it is, if you go here to the construction subtotal line, you'll see that it's $3 million versus the SBR, the first column, which was a previous low score for construction cost. So it's a million dollars cheaper to go that way. And that carries right through to the bottom line so that even where we look at total present worth, which includes consideration of operating costs, it's still a million dollars cheaper than the next closest option, which is SBR.
What are the, what are the, if Rick recommended it, why?
I think, well, Rick is here, right?
Yeah, Rick.
I'm here.
You want to answer that, Rick?
Yeah, I just felt we needed to look at it as an option. The, the lagoons by themselves are currently meeting permit and do a relatively good job. As Dexter mentioned, the weak point in the system really is the, the disk filters not doing their job. And I had to kind of go back to what, what triggered this whole project, which was the, the 1272 order to stop the overflows at McDonough Drive. So I wanted to make sure that we were focused. It kind of goes back to the problem you had, the question you had, Bill, which was, if, I think fixing the, fixing the overflows is going to be very important to what treatment we have going forward. If we can't fix the overflows, I think an SBR plant is problematic, although it's probably the best treatment alternative. So I just thought that if we were going to look at all these options, that we should look at what we had and getting our best bang for the buck. So.
Is, is the super primary lagoon like an outdated process? Is that why there are so few left?
I, I think that's a fair statement. Yeah.
Well, I had a, at my last, at one of my last municipalities, they had, they had a lagoon system. I think also, I mean, there's not many municipalities out there with these other technologies that are the size of Virgens. These other technologies, right Dexter, are, a lot of them are in bigger municipalities or bigger, they're bigger systems. And usually the lagoon system is for a smaller area most of the time, correct?
So I would say that lagoons are the lowest cost method of biological treatment available. If you've got the space, lagoons are your lowest cost. What's odd about Virgens and the Sugar Bush plant, and there used to be several more, Barton had one. I can't think of any others, but there was probably half a dozen in Vermont at one time. And it was always kind of an odd technology. I don't think it was ever, I don't think there's ever a lot of these facilities nationwide. My gut tells me there's probably some in Wisconsin.
So I get, not knowing much about the, the SBR thing, if we move to a different process, what happens to the existing lagoons? Do they go away?
So under this option, we keep the lagoons. And actually, what we're going back to is the original technology that was put in the, in the 70s.
Okay, and what happens with configuration? Is that a different lagoon?
The super lagoon?
Yeah.
That's what you have now. The lagoons, the reason they're called super primary lagoons is that they, they don't provide full treatment. They provide partial treatment and then the full treatment is provided in subsequent water treatment plant. It's a packaged fabricated steel filtration unit. It's got a flocculator, clarifier, filter. It's a, it's a water treatment plant. And so partial treatment is obtained in the lagoons. And then the complete treatment is obtained in the water treatment plant.
Rick gave me a tour of that plant years ago, but I didn't, I don't know much about the new technology.
Well, Dexter, this first line here, site improvements, isn't, isn't a lot of that allocated to fill in the lagoons?
Yes, that's why it's much cheaper. I mean, that's really your cost savings right there is by not having to abandon the lagoons, you save a million dollars.
And we also talked about this. I don't know that, let's say, we pick up and we go to a completely different location with a treatment plant. I don't know if that, that land is ever going to be able to be used again unless you invest tons of money into it to remit, to abate the sewage that's been there for.
It's a two brownfield site.
Yeah, like, yeah, yeah, yeah. No pun intended. Yeah.
Can you explain the benefit of the SBR system over the lagoon system? Could you just briefly educate us that really don't have an idea what this is all about?
Sure, I think the next slide might help because in the, I think it's the next slide. So these are, this is a sample of non-cross cost criteria that we used. The first is at McDonough. The second is the headworks, which is the front of the plant. The third is the biological treatment. So the, and this option doesn't include the super primary lagoon. So I have an updated version here that does include the super, super primary lagoon. These are the scorings that were done by Rick. So we looked at, other than cost criteria, reliability, flexibility, simplicity, energy efficiency, water efficiency, green infrastructure, and then lifecycle cost. So you'll see that where the SBR scores better than a lagoon, according to Rick, is it flexibility? Not in simplicity. Yes, in energy efficiency. So that's, you know, those are some of the considerations. It fits in a much more compact footprint, but that's not really a consideration. The reason we were looking at all these other technologies were, initially, we were trying to get away from the super primary lagoon. That wasn't a consideration in the beginning. So we identified these other five options.
Dexter, could you also talk about the TMDL requirements? Just in general, that Virgens isn't seeing and then the potential for them to see them in the future?
Could you repeat that, Lynette, or maybe, and maybe speak a little louder? I couldn't hear you very well.
Could you talk about the TMDL requirements? And that they're not seeing them today, but the potential to see them in the future?
Well, I, I guess I'm confused by your question. So TMDL is total daily maximum load. In this context, we're talking about phosphorus discharge to the Otter Creek. I believe Virgens does have limits on their TD, TMDL. And they're basically at your permit limits. So you're at two-thirds of your, your capacity.
Is that implying that if?
That that's gonna change.
So under the current TMDL, the agreement between EPA and Vermont DEC sets a total phosphorus limit through, for all of the waste load allocations for all of the wastewater treatment plants in the Lake Champlain Basin. They did this based on what they're calling a targeted lake segment process. So specific to Otter Creek, they determined that there was not a benefit in doing a reduction in the waste load allocation to wastewater treatment plants that discharge the Otter Creek. However, the, basically the backup plan for if the state of Vermont is not successful in our TMDL requirements for reducing phosphorus from agriculture and stormwater and all those other methods. In the event that that doesn't work out, they could, EPA has reserved the potential to come in and require a limit that would functionally be equivalent to 0.2 concentration in milligrams per liter of phosphorus, which would be a substantial reduction in your current waste load allocations.
Well-known as a crystal ball.
Yeah, yeah.
No, and so far the reporting is showing that we're tracking on track. But I think it's an important part of the discussion to talk about the, the risk.
Lynette, what I hear from that is our current loading, our current limit is 0.8. My understanding is the new permit coming out next year for Virgens is going to remain 0.8. I think if we stay with lagoons, should the EPA lower that limit on us, getting lower than 0.8 is going to be a challenge with lagoons, to say the least. And SBRs would, or MBRs or one of the other treatments would be, be a more suitable option.
That was my next question, Rick. Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't know. We haven't really talked about this. And one thing that the super primary lagoon option has that none of the other options here has is, is a sand filter at the end.
Yes.
And that is going to provide higher quality F1, in my opinion, than any of the other options. So from that perspective, it, it would suggest sticking with the super primary lagoon and the highest level of treatment you can afford on the tail end.
So I have a question of Daniel, you or Jeff. I mean, what is our goal tonight? Are we supposed to make a decision tonight? Or are we supposed to kind of guide this into a more finite decision-making process and fine-tune it? Because I don't see us making a decision tonight, given the cost and the complexity of what we're doing.
So I think where we're at tonight is, well, we've got a preliminary engineering report that we're trying to complete. And we need to write the final chapter that says this is the plan we're going to move forward with. Now, just my experience and my guidance is that planning doesn't end until the concrete is set.
Yeah.
So that, this is a, a plan for now. We seem to be on a schedule of getting to a bond vote in November. Between now and then, we're going to keep looking at other options like this super primary lagoon option we've just identified and added in the last month. So if we find other options or we find that, that this one's unacceptable for some reason, we'll make adjustments, you know, right up to the last minute before a bond vote in November. I mean, certainly with your input. I, I say we, I'm talking about the big we, like everybody on the call. We, so.
I mean, I'm just thinking if, if we were to to consider the more pros and cons of the SBR versus the super primary lagoon, you know, if you're looking at a sand filter at the end. I mean, do we need to have five proposals or can we get it down to two? And then can we, over the next, you know, period of time before the vote, kind of hone, hone it into one? I guess I don't know the process well enough.
I, I think that just for the purpose of completing the report, you'll need to pick one. I mean, I think that the state will have a hard time moving forward with options.
Okay.
If we pick one, we're not married to it until it's built. So there's always the opportunity to make changes throughout the process, during design, during construction. The sooner we make changes, the cheaper it is to make the change, right? If we get way, way down the road and we've completed a design, which is an expensive process, and we want to change it to a new design, that's an expensive change. If you've got construction half completed and you want to make changes, it can be very expensive. So the sooner we make these decisions, the better. I think you've got the summer to fine tune things or change directions if that comes up.
Okay.
If we're thinking of staying with the lagoon, it's my understanding, both on our calls here and having walked the plant with Rick a couple of times, the biggest problem is the fact that the filters that we have, that we use after the lagoon does its thing, don't do their job. And there's nothing out there that does that. Do, are we aware of new technology or a new supplier to give us big filters that are gonna do what we always wanted to do, but it never has done?
So the issue with the existing filters is that perhaps they're overloaded. They're getting more solids applied to them then allows them to meet the performance requirements. So what? And so as far as filter to filter goes, what this process is doing is it's adding a step before the filters. And the step it's adding, actually two steps, a flocculation step, which gives the wastewater time to react with chemicals and form a nice flock to be removed by the filters and the, and the clarifiers. Flock?
Flocculation.
Flocculation. After the, then there's a clarifier unit, which removes all the settleable solids. And then the, so the wastewater that goes to the filters then is cleaner than it is now. So the filters have to have a lighter load. Certainly a lighter load than existing disk filters see.
Where does the sand filter option come in? Is that something that could be incorporated now in place of the disk filters?
Yeah, they could, but we would think that the sand filters would be overloaded just as the disk filters. I think you probably have different symptoms of problems. But we're not keen on putting filters directly behind lagoons.
Okay.
Might say not keen on putting filters downstream of lagoons at all. That's another, another thing. This is the original technology. It worked for a good 20 years.
Right. Dexter, if I can, having had the, actually the great opportunity to participate in, in other meetings with Dexter on this topic, I think that, that what I've really learned is that I'm no sewer system expert. And I think this is an opportunity for us to rely very heavily on Rick's opinion. He has an outstanding reputation in this state. So I, I think the question really should be to Rick as to how he feels we should proceed. Excuse me.
I think that's a great point.
The short, short answer for that is I suggested the keeping the lagoons, replacing the filters. And the, from that discussion, we had decided that either we needed a clarifier or as Dexter just explained, some sort of process ahead of the filtration. I think that that is a very inexpensive option moving forward for the city. When we look at a modern plant, we have to look at a few different things, in my opinion. We need to look at, you know, it's going to be computerized. So the personnel we have down there, energy consumption for a modern facility that has a lot more motors and valves and pumps and things. So I think long-term, a couple of things, great things came out of this conversation, the, the whole phosphorus concerns. The, the whole phosphorus concerns, um. I, I think that with the sand filter or, or an equivalent technology, we can meet the needs going forward. The SBR would give us some flexibility for what they call biological nutrient removal that we don't currently have with the lagoons, um, that, that might help us meet some things down the road. But that's really a roll of the dice. I think the best bang for the buck is upgrading the, the lagoons and putting in a really quality treatment after them. And just kind of correcting the deficiency we currently have.
And, and would that, that plan of action also allow us the possibility of, of some future development? Uh, you know, we're, we, we have, we have dreams and, and plans for, uh, you know, a hundred new connections in the city. Would that still be viable?
Yes, yeah. We've got all the reserve capacity with this option and all the same treatment objectives, uh, for each option. So, yes, that's, we've got plenty of capacity for you.
Great.
I, I think Dexter made another really good point, which is the filters are overloaded. And that overloading is, is really a result of Virgens has never really had a real great, um, uh, control of the sludge in the lagoons. We, 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 it kind of gets kicked down the road and we end up with too much sludge in those lagoons, which then flushes out under high flow conditions, blinds the filters. And then we end up kind of, we're stuck in this pattern. Um, and then the more you have out there, the more expensive it, it is to get rid of. And then we never really kind of get rid of what we need to. So going forward, if we kept the lagoons, an important part of that would be controlling, controlling the sludge depth and making sure that we're really staying on top of the, uh, the day-to-day maintenance.
So assuming we do good stuff before it hits the filter and after it hits the filter, how long is it going to be before a future city council is going to be talking about the fact that we need to replace the water treatment plant? Is this a five-year fix? Is this a 20-year fix?
Oh, boy.
It's a 20-year fix, uh, just because your loan term is likely to be at least 20 years, if not 30.
Well, but a loan term and how the actually works is not necessarily in line. I just want to make sure that if we're going to stick with something, this is going to be something that I'm not going to have to talk about again.
So unfortunately, no matter what we do, you own a wastewater treatment plant. And it's got parts that need to be replaced every year, every two years, five, and all the way up to 20. So there's always things that are going to be breaking and need replacement repair. It is, you know-
Just not the whole thing, hopefully.
Yeah, I don't mean never talk about sewer treatment. I just mean not talking about, okay, we need to tear it down and start again.
Uh, you may, that may never happen. Uh, so look at the history of it, like in the, uh, seventies. Um, you installed the super primary lagoons with the, with Roberts filters. 20 years later, you replaced the Roberts filters with disc filters. Now 20 years later, you're replacing the disc filters and going back to Roberts filters. Um, I think that these are major pieces of mechanical equipment. Every 20 years, more or less, they're going to need to be replaced. Now, we can do things like, uh, we, we didn't price it for stainless steel, um, tankage, but you could do stainless steel tankage. And then 20 years down the road, maybe you can rebuild in the existing containers. You know, that's a little risky. You don't know what technology is going to be available 20 years from now. So I don't know. I think we've got a reasonable plan. I'd call it a 20-year upgrade, but don't expect that there won't be capital, capital improvements required.
I mean, I'm looking more, we have, what, half a dozen possibilities here? And this way, staying with the system we already have, isn't any better or worse timeline-wise than any of the others. Like going to one of the, like, that trickling filter is, that can be a hundred-year thing as opposed to 20 years for the lagoon, as opposed to 35 years for the RBC. I, I just want to make sure that we're kind of looking at apples and apples.
Yeah, well-
They all have about the same general life.
Yep. As much as possible, we made them apples and apples comparison. I will say that the, the one thing that's different about the lagoon option is you've got lagoons. You've got these giant ponds. Uh, someone talked about them being a brownfield, you know? There is a, with that one option, there is a, a risk out there that there could be some kind of environmental issue or regulation that would affect the lagoons that wouldn't affect the, the other options. So I, I'd say that's out there, but it's a, it's a remote thing.
Okay. Also, the, the sludge removal, the solids removal was a lot more cost. It, it, it's cheapest with lagoons, correct Dexter?
Yes. So with the lagoons, it's good if you keep up with the sludge removal every year. They generally produce less sludge. But, you know, the low cost, the normal practice is every five years or so, you drop hundreds of thousands of dollars and get your lagoons cleaned and get rid of the sludge that way. City's been quite successful doing that. Uh, like Rick said, you could do a better job of keeping up with it. But, um, that's one of the things that make, make lagoons a cheaper option.
So Rick, are you willing to sign a contract for 20 years?
I don't know about that, Bill.
Just asking.
Rick, look for advanced-
I plan on being around a while.
Good, okay.
Yeah, I, you know, I think just to, just to kind of talk a little more about that sludge thing. Um, we would be, if we went to an SBR or one of those other biological systems, we would need to, uh, the, the sludge handling is going to be more expensive because we need to put in some sort of way to deal with it. Um, I think if anybody's familiar with what goes on in Middlebury where they've got, those are SBRs in Middlebury, a third wastewater treatment plant. And then they've got belt filter presses where they have to treat their sludge. Um, we wouldn't have to do everything they do. They've got a much more elaborate system. But, um, we would have to do something every day and we'd, we'd be able to store much less onsite. So there are some additional costs with hauling, handling, um, and there again, maybe some personnel issues with how many do we need down there to do pressing or handling sludge?
Daniel, that might be something that you and Rick could look at is just increases or decreases in annual maintenance costs in terms of labor or materials or disposal costs. And compare the, the SBR versus the primary lagoon system and just see. Because one way or the other, we got to pay for it.
Yeah, Dexter, Dexter, you looked at that, right?
Yeah, on that here, um, back on this table down, down the bottom part, power chemicals, maintenance. So you see that, um, you know, we got different maintenance is labor. Chemicals is the same for all options except the MBR. Power varies with the options. So that's been considered.
So actually the, uh, lagoon is more expensive to run.
Than the SBR, yeah.
Yeah. Not a big difference.
Where's sludge in there, Dexter?
Sludge is in a different table.
Yeah, so if you factor sludge in there, it, it goes up. Yeah, I mean, at the SBR, you have to, you have to do, you have to spend a lot more money on sludge every year.
Right.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I, I don't know, Jeff, how you want to proceed with this. I mean, I, we certainly had a good discussion, I think. Do we, do we need to digest it? For two weeks and then come back and?
Well, if we, if we intend to take this out for a bond vote in November, time is really of the essence for us.
Yep.
And, and I'm, I'm not really sure what two weeks does. Uh, as, as I have learned over the last month or so, meeting with Daniel and, and Rick and Dexter and everyone else, um, you know, I'm, I, although I feel more educated, I'm no more an expert than I began this process. And, uh, I really trust Rick's opinion. And I, I think we should, my personal opinion is we should follow his recommendation.
I, I think I agree. I, I see no, no reason to, to do anything otherwise.
If we have a, if we have an opportunity to get a grant from USDA for something like this, that would be an amazing opportunity. Um, and I'll just add, a lot of the places don't, a lot of the places don't have, um, the luxury of getting grants for, um, a proprietary, uh, an enterprise fund. Usually you have to raise your fees sufficiently to build up reserves to, you know, deal with your maintenance or upgrades to a plant. We have an opportunity to get us a, a large sum of money from the federal government. For, the, the last place I came from, they, they didn't have that luxury. And, um, you know, so I, 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 I would really like to pursue the money if we can.
Yeah, and as someone else observed earlier, you know, every day this all gets more expensive. So we, I think, need to come to a decision. And as Dexter also mentioned, you know, this, this is still a plan until the concrete is set. So, uh, we're not, we're not, uh, we're not donating blood to make this happen.
We just need a thumbs up or do you want a motion?
Lynette, are you still here?
I am. So the, the requirement in our state environmental review procedure is that the decision is made at a public meeting and that's all it speaks to.
Right. Before a decision, are we just saying, yeah, go ahead and lagoon? Or do you want to make a formal motion saying the board that the council is putting forward the super, or special lagoons or super lagoons, whatever it was, um, as the option we're going to pursue for the plan being?
Probably be a formal motion.
I, yeah, let's, let's do a motion. And, uh, how, how should we word that, Daniel?
I think just how, how Mark, Mark's either.
All right, well, I make that motion.
Thank you, Mark.
Great, and lol, seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Could it please be recorded in the minutes that way?
Yes, it will be. All right, I hear no discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Is anyone opposed? Thank you, everyone. Motion carries. We have an alternative plan.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Dexter.
A big day for Virgens. Thank you.
Yes, it is a big day. Thank you, everybody. Moving along, item B, appoint members to the Virgens revolving loan fund committee. Daniel, would you like to say a few things?
Yeah, let me get to it here. Um, so the, it's, the agency of commerce, ACCD, I was in a meeting with them the other day, um, with all the municipalities that have a revolving loan fund for economic development in their community. That they, ACCD, Ted Brady over there wants to start a program, um, to try to incentivize recovery efforts from the coronavirus. So there, there will be, um, money either by loans from the state or by grants from the state, um, coming to municipalities that have a revolving loan fund. Our revolving loan funds committee, um, their, their terms have all elapsed. So I am here today presenting you with a, a group of individuals that I want, that, that are willing to serve and that, that could, uh, make up the revolving loan fund committee. So I'm just looking for your appointments, these positions in front of you today.
And they've all agreed, Daniel?
Yes.
I would move that we approve the slate put before us by the city manager. Second, or the resolving revolving loan fund committee.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item C, appoint members to the junior fishing derby committee.
Um, so similar to revolving loan fund committee, this is to kickstart planning for the junior fishing derby coming up. And there's not a committee in place right now. However, um, I sent you guys an email this morning. I'm only able, I, I only have two members right now. Um, they would like more if possible. Does anyone have any nominations they would like to make for an appointment to this committee?
I'm going to reach out to somebody tomorrow, but I haven't done so yet.
Okay. Anyone else?
Could appoint the two that you have and then add to it in two weeks, but at least get it started.
Can we do that? Okay.
Sure, that's, we should do that.
Yeah. Um, and the two-
Mark?
Excuse me?
Was that a motion?
Uh, we can approve the, the two names put forward by the city manager. So, you have their name?
Yeah, the, it's Mar- Martha DeGraff and Kyle Isacharon. Those are the two.
Okay.
Right. Motion made.
Second.
And seconded. Any discussion? Very well. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item D, appoint members to the pool advisory committee.
Uh, so again, similar to the fishing derby, we're trying to plan the opening of the pool or the non-opening of the pool. Um, we don't really know right now, but I'd like to get these members, uh, together to have a discussion beyond just Kim and myself and, and, um, Ben Kingsley. So, um, yeah, we, we haven't formally received a city council member though. I guess I have to fill that. And is there anyone from the city council that would like to serve on the pool committee?
I'd like to see Mark do it, if he's willing.
I can do it. I kept out of it for the first couple of years because I had, I wanted the council to be invested beyond just me and my raw hands, but I'm happy to step up and do it.
Okay. Would it, would it make sense to put Kim in as the recreation committee member?
Kim, well, Kim is going to be involved no matter what. And so we have that discuss, we, we had that discussion and I, I just feel like it's more appropriate to have one member of the city represented on this, uh, committee. And yeah, again, you know, K, the meetings, Kim and I are probably going to be at the meetings regardless.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
I just, Robin was there as a school rep as well. You know, it's like Kim could be, but if you're all there, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, we talked, we talked about it, so, um.
That's fine.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve it.
Tara seconded.
Tara seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Very well, we move into budget workshop.
All right. So I did a new presentation, um, some edits here. Um, I pretty much have the budget done, just to preface this. Um, I met with all the department heads. The only thing I'm working on is the pool. Um, I mean, I'm working on fine tuning all of, all of the budgets, but I, I have numbers together for everything except for the pool. So I'm presenting you guys today, um, with a budget for the, for all funds except for the pool fund. So just to start off, um, we don't have a capital plan for, for, yeah, I, I'd like to start the capital plan at the very least with vehicles. And this is what we're working with at Public Works and the police department. And you can see in red is stuff that's old. And you can see that we're getting there on our bucket loader that's really expensive and some other pricey, um, expense, expenses coming up. And, you know, it's, it's pretty simple to put together a, just a standard rotation plan and, and, you know, budget savings based on, on what you're trying to accomplish, um, with replacing vehicles. So I put something quick together, um, and this kind of shows from this, you have here the fiscal year that I, that, that these items should be replaced. And basically I plotted them on here. Um, so these are those items by Public Works or PD. And then for a couple of items, I plotted for a loan. Right now, what we've been, how we've been operating is taking out loans when we need a vehicle on everything. And that's just not, it's not sustainable. We have to start putting money away for vehicles. Um, so to meet all of our vehicle needs for Public Works and the police department until 2029, um, I, I calculated saving 80, putting $80,000 aside every year would, would, would do the trick where we wouldn't, we wouldn't have to take out a loan. Um, with the exception of these two, just because we're in rough shape from the onset. So next year, we're not going to be making any vehicle purchases. Um, I, I froze, I froze all of that. Um, but the following year, we're going to have to make a bunch of purchases. And we, we're going to be in a, a- And we, we're going to be in a, a position where we don't have enough in savings yet. Um, so we'll have to take out a loan. I highlight, this is the bucket loader, I believe. This is the bucket loader and I think something else as well. Um, but I highlighted it in red because we could technically, i- if we, if we went by this plan year over year, we could pay for it out of the pocket down the line. Um, however, I highlighted it in red because as you can see, we're not taking out a loan for a while. So that kind of increases the flexibility of our credit. So we could take out a loan. Basically, I'm saying highlighting this in red is that, um, if we need, you know, th- this can be our flexibility. Um, we don't, we don't need, i- i- if we don't meet this every year, eighty thousand dollars every year, then we could be flexible in taking out a loan way down the line for this item here. So, um, you know, this is a start. It's a, it's a very, very beginning. I have to do one for the pool, a capital improvement plan. I have to do one for pretty much every all, all of our infrastructure. And I'm going to try to meet, you know, get everything together to meet the Gatsby standards at the same time. But this is, this is a start. Um, so I just wanted to preface with that, with the budget. Going into the budget, uh, any, any questions on this? Um, looking at our revenues here, these are our top five revenue sources. Um, one, one to five. Yeah, go ahead.
Jeff, do, do you have to leave? I'm just wondering, do you want, do you want to like try and accomplish a certain amount before we finish tonight and then come back? Cause I have a feeling we're not going to do this entire thing this evening.
I, I'm fine. I'm fine. I will, I will, will gladly skip the parade tonight to get through this.
Well, I might be brain dead in the next, you know, half an hour to hour. So I'm just, you know.
Well, I don't, I hope we don't go an hour, but thank you.
Okay.
I'm fairly confident I can, we'll get through it. Um, so obviously property taxes make up the majority of our revenue sources. Second is our payment in lieu of taxes. And, uh, third, this is an administrative fee that's transferred from the sewer, um, department to the general fund to pay for admin fees. Um, mill, millage aid and then, um, interest earnings, which we are probably not going to see any of next year. Um, so here's, here's what I'm, I, I'm putting together the grand list. Um, I have it reconciled, the grand list. So this is the number that I'm looking at for property tax with the same tax rate. Um, our assessed value changes has a very minor change. Our ti- our, uh, revenue from taxes goes up. Not, not a lot at all, um, with the same tax rate and.
So Dan, that increase is only, is a half a million dollars. Is that what we have for an increase in the grand list? And it, it's five thousand, which would be five.
The increase in the grand list.
In real property value increases, I would think with the houses at Comer Driv, we'd have more than that. Or did we have losses?
Well, we had some stuff torn down and that stuff too, to kind of offset.
Okay. You and I can go over it some other time.
Yeah, no, I, I reconciled the grand list. I think the overall increase was around four hundred thousand.
Okay.
There's something like that. Maybe a lot, maybe a little less than that. So this is, um, this is the first, this is the first couple of things in the revenue portion of the general fund. So how, how I, how I kind of organized this presentation is I'm going to go, I, I broke down each item of the budget and then the total of that item. So here is, so I'm going to show you guys three types of revenue and then all the revenues in one. And then when we go to like administration, part of administration, part of administration, and then the tire administration. So just so you know, so this is part of, of a general fund revenues. Um, again, this minor change, um, you can see there, uh, the minor valuation change uh, with the tax rate the same. Um, when we go to clerk, uh, clerk office revenues, I think the clerk fees were recently changed and, um, I'm, I'm projecting it's, it's probably less now with everything that's going on with coronavirus, but I'm, I'm projecting it to be substantially higher from our clerk fees. Um, we almost met budget on, in the beginning of March. Um, so we're, we're ahead of schedule on clerk fees because of the rate increase. And same with, same with zoning fees. We just increased the zoning rate. So Peter has projected that this will be the new revenue for zoning fees. Um, so now into proper, uh, uh, payment in lieu of taxes. Um, this is the trend year over year and you can see it's going up as we raise the tax rate. Now, I broke it down here to get an, um, the exact amount we'll be seeing, I believe, next year. Um, as we raise the tax rate, um, the state works off of the last year's tax rate. So when we get our payment in lieu of taxes, it's going to be off of the last year's tax rate. Added, and this is last year's tax rate added adjusted value, and then they adjust it again. So this, this is what it would be if we didn't, i- if it was a private individual who owned the property, not the state. Um, this, the state adjusts the tax rate down to this and they get this value. And then finally they do a prorated value at eighty-one percent to give us a final number. So that's, that's where that number comes. We're currently, we currently collected a hundred six thousand. We'll be going to a hundred seventeen thousand next year. And here is where it's located on the budget. Um, other revenues, um, couple of notes here. I put zero for interest earnings. Um, police fines have been a lot greater since they started using the scales for overweight vehicles. We have a new contract with the town of Addison that's projected to bring in seventeen thousand dollars, which should start after, um, this whole coronavirus that the stay safe, stay home, stay safe order expires. Um, and then this hundred thousand dollars is actually an internal transfer from sewer fund to general fund to pay for admin costs.
So Dan, do you feel, does, does Chief Merkel feel that eighty, eighty thousand dollars is a reasonable number?
I, we were on track to be, Chief, are you here right now?
I am.
You want to speak to that?
Yeah, I, I think, I, I think that's a reasonable, um, figure, Bill. Um, obviously coronavirus has certainly curtailed our efforts. But, um, but, uh, providing we don't have that next year, I, I think, uh, eighty thousand dollars would work.
Okay.
Okay.
And I think, um, we're, we're, we're on track to be well over that this year. Um, you know, at this point in time, we had, um, a couple of ten thousand dollar tickets outstanding. So those still should be coming in and we should, we should be even over eighty thousand dollars this year.
Great.
Great.
Uh, yeah. So again, so here's the total of all those pages here, just all on one sheet. So as we go into the departments, administration, here's first half of administration. Um, there's a bunch of changes here with personnel, um, because we went from uh, cl- clerk slash treasurer, assistant clerk slash treasurer to a clerk and a treasurer. Um, so that, that's, that's a substantial change, um, on those two line items. This position is vacant at, right now, I'm still going to budget for it. Um, and and something else to consider, the med- uh, medical insurance rates. I did calculate a ten percent increase and, cause that's been the average increase in our medical insurance um, year over year. Last year was a, a really big increase, but on average it's been ten percent. Um, and this is a lot, this is lower than budgeted last year because myself and, and Morgan are, the new people are going to be paying twenty percent of the costs. And also the HRA usage on average is not, is around nineteen hundred dollars, um, which is baked, baked into this number as well. However, I, I projected, I believe, three thousand per employee, um, for this line item throughout. Um.
Think you might want to bump your percentage beyond ten. Next year is going to be another major bump, especially with Corona. That's the way the insurance company is going to make their money back. School districts are projecting possibly twenty. I've heard forty percent increase out in California.
It's crazy.
Forty percent?
Yeah.
It's not, that's not sustainable.
No, but insurance companies don't particularly care about sustainability. If they did, they would do what they do.
I can plug in.
I just, it's, I just, that's the, the funny thing about Wall Street is that, you know, you would think the big insurance companies would have taken a major hit on their stocks when all this happened, because it's going to be paying off. They actually are making money. Stocks are shooting through the roof because everyone knows they're just going to raise their premiums next year to cover any costs they have this year.
See, we're, we're a bit odd because we have, we have the HRA card. So, um, which is baked into, again, baked into that number. So it's not clean cut. We're, we're never going to be right at budget because people use different amounts for their card. And I, I have found, so we've budgeted five thousand dollars per employee, I believe typically. And that's the max you can use in a year. No one, not everyone is using five thousand. I don't think anyone's maxing it out. Maybe some people are.
Now, we juggle the same, yeah, we juggle the same thing in this, in the school is trying to figure out how that works and, and it's all changed in the past year. I just mean the percentage. I think that ten percent is, is far too low for what's going to happen next year.
And I could plug that in, but I, I just wanted to say that I've calculated in that number is three thousand dollars per employee. When in the past it's been like four, I, you know, it's been high, there's flexibility. There's two, two things going on there, the HRA and, and insurance. So I'll, I'll work on the numbers. I, that's.
When are you going to get a, a potential forecast number from VLCT?
It comes, it comes like November or October.
Okay. I, I wasn't sure about when that was going to come out. Okay.
Yeah. And, you know, I talked to them before coronavirus and they gave, I asked for five year history because I wanted to see what the trend was and it's ten percent is the trend. Last year was fourteen percent. Maybe I'll reach back out to them and see what their thoughts are on this as well. So I, I can do some, I can do some homework on that.
Great.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Um, so the second half of administration, um, so this green one here. Uh, telephone, we, we had, we're, we entered into like services with, with this company called Granite and they're charging us way more for telephones than we should be charged. I mean, I've been working at trying to figure out what the, the phone situation for the police department and city hall even looks like and what can be done. And on Thursday, I'm switching over to a better carrier, hopefully. Um, so that, that all being said, this number may drop substantially because, and, and you could see we're already projected to be over budget, um, because we, we have services that we're getting, we're getting killed on right now. Um, I can't believe we're paying so much for phone services. So I'm in the process of changing that. So that should be lower. Uh, this should be lower because we have a new boiler system in city hall. Um, and this will hopefully, hopefully be lower appraisal consultant fee once I figure out what, how to do a grand list completely. Um, so these three, I'm budgeting the same amount as last year. However, I, I, I'm doing that conservatively. However, I think they'll be lower next year. Um, this is the website cost plus some of migration fees from this year. So we didn't go over this year with our budget. Um, and then, uh, yeah, IT fees are substantially lower. Um, that will be substantially lower than this year because we bought all new computers and we went to the cloud and did a bunch of technical stuff this year. So those things kind of give us some flexibility in that administration. And here's, here's the total. Any questions?
You answered all my questions.
Cool. Um, police, honestly, nothing, I mean, we kept pretty much everything relatively the same with police. You know, the union contract entails a three percent increase to the officers. Um, aside from that, here's the second half. Um, you know, it's some things that, you know, Chi- Chief will, you know, talk to you all day about this one is that our, our vehicle maintenance repair line items are always going to be higher until we get a maintenance plan in place. So hopefully this number will come down and Chief may have a lead on, on some, some grants and stuff to help this number come down.
Why did our liability insurance drop so drastically?
Which line are, this line here?
Twenty.
I think we just overbought, I, I mean, thi- this is the actual rate that we will, that will be charged next year. Um, oh, someone keeps echoing. Um.
I just wasn't sure if we changed carriers or?
No, it's the, it's the same carrier. Uh, you, our insure, our insurance, we get really good rates because of our, we get an experience factor. We have, um, so we have, we have, you know, Chief Jim Lara, we have people that have been here a long time and that helps us in the actuarial numbers, um, they told us. So our, you know, our number, and, and also, so they do an audit on this in like in January, February, and, um, based on that, we may owe more or owe less. And, um, for this year, we do owe more, but this is what will be charged for next year. This is, yeah, I'm not sure why this one was so high or why they budgeted this amount. This is going to be the exact amount that we will pay next year unless they do the audit and we owe more because we hired people throughout the year or whatever.
Okay.
Um, this is that, that purchase of that vehicle that we just paid in the warrants. So there's that, that cost for next year. Um, I, yeah, so what I was saying is that, um, you know, as, as long as we don't have a vehicle rotational plan and same with Public Works, this line's always going to be really high and we're just going to be, you know, spending money on junk vehicles. So hopefully that, that'll help us number. There's an inverse relationship there. Uh, here's the total of those two slides. And now into public works. Um, overtime has gone, is going, is going to go up a little bit because, um, Jim has, uh, had more responsibility with the sidewalks and he's, and he, we brought on another employee to try to help with that. They spend a lot of time on sidewalks and that, you know, it's going to increase the overtime.
Is that sidewalk maintenance?
Sidewalk plowing.
Sidewalk plowing.
Yeah, with that vent tracks. Jim, are you on with us? No. Yeah, no, the sidewalks take the longest out of anything, I think. Jim told me. Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
What we decided with, uh, when Matt was city manager and because of the phone calls that we were receiving, that he wanted us to spend as much time on the sidewalks as we do the roads. Um, and he wanted, he wants the, it was decided to have the sidewalks look just like the roads. Um, so we took it upon, or I took it upon myself when we pre-treat roads now before storms, which I started doing last year on the roads. I decided to preach, start preaching the sidewalks this year. And, yeah, so it's just, it were intense.
Yeah. Yep. Thank you, Jim. I think, does anyone have any questions to that?
I just wonder if, if, uh, I, I, I think sidewalks need to be maintained well. I don't know if there's any new technology out there or.
Well, we got, we got, we, we got this great tractor, um, that, that vent tracks and it's phenomenal and it's cheap too, to replace. I mean, whereas other vehicles cost like over a hundred thousand dollars. Those big ones that, that you see in the big cities with the, it's got like the big back on it, kind of. I don't know if you can picture it. The, the, we, we have a great vehicle, right, Jim? Are you still there?
Yes, I am. So, um, like Burlington, South Burlington, Middlebury, they have, uh, what you call a holder. Those holders are a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars each and like Middlebury has two. I can't imagine how many Burlington and South Burlington have. Um, our machine cost total with all the attachments for year round use is about forty-seven thousand dollars, where these holders are a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and they're only used during the winter. Um, but the technology out there right now, to answer your question, Bill, is, um, to pre-treat, um, just like we do our roads now.
Mm-hmm.
Which has, I'll, I'll be honest, this is the first time in thirty-three years that I haven't, I have not received a phone call this past winter on the condition of our sidewalks.
That's great.
I was waiting for that phone call and I know, oh, apparently this is what the people, the community want. apparently this is what the people, the community want, um, but it is at a cost. Yep.
So I just wanted to point that out.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Um, so working down, so pretty much everything else in, in public, in Jim's budget here. You know, we went through, it's pretty much the same.
I have one question, Dan or Jim, under highway improvements. You know, there's a hundred thousand in our budget and through March first, there's only thirty-one hundred dollars spent. I mean, given, given the situation with contractors on hold and so on, are we going to be able to spend that or is there going to be a surplus in that line item?
There's going to be a surplus in that line item.
Yeah, because, um, what, what was decided is that any money that I have left in my infrastructure until the end of June, on June thirtieth, um, I've been asked to keep for the following year. So we're not going to be infrastructure work.
As long as you're thinking that, then that's good.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that. So I, I put here, um, projected a hundred thousand dollars. This should say three thousand eighty-eight. It's not going to be, we're, we're not, so basically this number is a carryover. Yeah, Jim. Yeah, we, we, we've halted spending to, to preserve cash flows. Um, so yeah, that was a good segue into that. And then the capital outlay line item is the new, uh, Kenworth truck that we still got, that we, we still have five more years of payments on. And then the sidewalk plow we just talked about, that we just have one more year of payments on. So you can see between, I'll come back up to police, be, between police, their payments here and public works. Uh, there, there are vehicle payments here. I mean, the, the availability to make, to, to take out another loan, it's not there. So we got to start thinking about putting away money. So anyway, here's, here's the total of public works. Now move on to other. Um, Bigsby is increasing their fee because we can't shovel their stairs. I guess we, we, they give us like an in-kind five thousand dollar deduction from what other municipalities pay them. And they're going to lower that because of, because they're doing their own plowing and their own stairs now. So that's that change. And then, um, I, I added the capital improvement plan money here. So this is, so basically, you know, our, our revenues with our tax rate are up here and our expenses are right here. And I'm filling the gap with putting away money in the capital improvement plan for vehicles. As I showed you guys at the beginning, we need eighty thousand dollars a year. This is eighty-seven thousand dollars. What this allows us to do also with the uncertainty around what's, what's coming next with this whole recession coronavirus thing. You know, we can, this gives us flexibility in the budget. We can say, you know what, we, we can't save eighty thousand, we can only save twenty dollars, whatever. Whatever realities we're facing, having a line item of savings will give us flexibility down the road. And possibly allow us to save money towards purchasing the vehicles. So basically, you know, whatever's, whatever's remaining in the budget, I'm putting it, I'm putting it here. Uh, and one more thing that I didn't notate with any of these boxes here, this is Kim Buckley. So Kim Buckley's in the budget and I added, so I added a line item for Kim. I guess that, these line items here, I guess, would, they, they're more for rec supplies and stuff. They should be down with line fourteen. Line twelve and thirteen are new line items for the rec coordinator. So the rec coordinator is included in the budget twenty-five hours a week. Um, which is, Kim and I, we sat down and talked about that and she felt that's good for, good for now. And we're, we're still going to expand on her position. Um, she's working, she's doing phenomenal work. She's doing a lot. So, uh, any questions? We're almost there. Um, so voter appropriations, that went up by seventy-one hundred dollars. I just wanted to point that out. Um, and that really draws a conclusion, the general fund. And now the summary is at the end of all the funds. Fire department, um, honestly, I mean, nothing, nothing changed here in the fire department. However, we have to start considering a capital, uh, replacement plan for the fire department. Um, they, you know, we, we took out bonds for their big fire trucks here and the, we, we can't take out a bond. The, 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 there's no more capacity for any more, um, for any more credit, uh, credit payments.
Daniel, can you explain in more detail the line number ten? High budget, low expenses, high increase.
Well, all right, here, so Chief, Chief's on with us too. He could probably speak to this, but I'll do, so what's happened is uh, at the end of the year, so Chief, Chief goes, you know, day to day as he needs to do maintenance on vehicles. As he needs to buy supplies, he buy, he, he makes those purchases. However, he's got a, a, a rotation plan for his turnout gear and for his, um, you know, his S C B A's and stuff. So basically, if there's money left in the budget at year end, that's when he makes those purchases for S C B A's and turnout gear and that type of stuff. Again, we froze everything, including those purchases. So, uh, Chief, are you, are you, are you with us here?
Yeah, I'm right here.
Do, do you want to add anything to that?
No, actually you just hit it. I mean, the, the, the fact of the matter is, is I was always not coming up that, you know, you kind of hold on to your budget, you know, toward the end of the year, just in case something drastic happens. Um, first half of the year or first right through. And of course, this year we got hit with this uh, COVID nineteen and, uh, Daniel has asked me to make no purchases. So that's why things are looking a lot higher right now. Usually right now that I'm really start spending the money.
So that's, that's kind of that. And then, I mean, you know, Chief and I, we have to, we have to work on the capital plan. And we're going to, we're going to hit the ground running on that. You know, Chief's a volunteer, so I can only, you know, we can, he's got his own full-time responsibilities. But we'll be, we'll be, as time permits, we'll be working on our own capital improvement plan for the fire department. It's essential. So. Um, so yeah, that's fire. Same, same fire rates, same fire, it's, you know, relative. Yeah, it's the same, same expense, bottom line, same revenue, bottom line. More or less, so. Um, and then sewer department. And again, it, this is pretty boilerplate. A lot of the same stuff here. What you will notice is that I'm projecting that we are going to bring in a lot more money than, uh, we budgeted for this year. And that, that's, that's because of that increase. And that increase is going to help because we, we're, we're taking in this much money and we're spending only this much money. There's going to be a fun, we, we need, there, there's a much needed fun balance in the sewer, in the sewer fund. We need some surplus. We need some room so we could do maintenance. And, and, you know, let's say this whole bond thing falls apart and we don't get any money. We need money in the bank to do these improvements for contingent, contingency plan. So, um, you know, right, you know, uh, like I said, everything else on here is pretty pretty standard, you know, I, I, Rick needed some new clothes, some new uniforms and a microscope. And so those, the, the little things are in here, but other, other than that, it's pretty, it's pretty much the same. And I'll just, um, note here that we do put away, even in our regular operating budget, we put away, you guys know that we put away forty thousand dollars a year for, um, sludge. But we also put away forty thousand dollars a year for sewer line replacements. We don't have much money put away. So it makes me feel like this is a new, a new savings plan that they've done. And you can see it was only twenty thousand uh, back in, in twenty eighteen. Um, but, but, and we transfer a hundred thousand dollars over to the general fund. So we save, uh, eighty thousand dollars already within our operating budget, within this number. And then on top of that, we're going to save whatever this, um, the difference is there. So, um, you know, we're, we're in pretty good shape with the sewer plant. We're in pretty good shape. Hopefully we get one of these grants. And also I, you know, you guys were taught, we, we have to look at other things like the sewer ordinance. And I, I think you guys were looking at maybe increasing the fees down the road again, you know. There, there's, there's opportunity in sewer tap fees and impact fees. Um, so there, there's more, there's more revenue source opportunity for the sewer fund and we'll be looking at all of that. But right now, we don't look too bad. Uh, swimming pool, like I said, it's not done. And then here, yeah, see the last one. So here's the grand summary of everything. Um, the surplus within the, the sewer fund, balanced budget and fire and general fund. Uh, any questions?
So essentially are you saying, Daniel, that in the general fund, we're going to be able to almost level fund at ninety-two cents?
If everyone pays their taxes, let's cross our fingers.
Great, thank you.
How is the tax resume coming in so far? I know it's not due yet, but is there, can Morgan let us know how that's coming in?
Yeah, here, I, I kind of have. So, um, it, before I jump to that, is there anything else on the budget?
Did a good job, thank you.
You guys have the same document I have digested. And I'll bring it, we're, we're going to bring it up again at the next meeting, that's for sure. So I, I just, I, I want, I really wanted to get the ball rolling on that. All right, yeah, uh, cash flow. Um, so as of, now Morgan just collected a bunch, I was in the office. This is actually, this is wrong, this should be four twenty-seven yesterday. Because I was in the office today and she had some substantial checks. Um, but this is all that we've collected so far this year. All right, so far for April, so far for April. And it's nothing compared to April of last year. However, it's only nineteen percent of what, uh, we, we've collected nineteen percent of our fourth quarter property tax bill. And most of it, which is this two seventy-five, came from when the initial property tax bills went out. A lot of the people pay the full amount upfront. So I, so we've only collected in April as of yesterday. And this number went up substantially today, I believe, later today. Um, but we've only collected thirty-two thousand as of yesterday, which, and all in all, represents nineteen percent when, when you look at everything that's been paid before that towards this quarter. Um, with, uh, with my cash flow, um, you know, when I plug in those numbers, which these numbers will change. So with this as the assumption for April, we need this much in May. Uh, six hundred seventy thousand dollars to stay above water.
Morgan, do you know what percentage of residential taxes are escrowed? Just curious.
But there's a large percentage. We have two vendors, CoreLogic and, um, oh gosh, if you went to ask me, I told you, there's another vendor who pays the escrow. There are two companies that the files to.
Yep.
Um, they send in a significant amount of money. I couldn't tell you how many parcels there are. Um, because there's no way for me to find that out.
And, and that's, I'm just wondering, you know, if that's a more or less reliable source of income. I don't know.
Oh, for sure. Yeah, that's something that I talked to Daniel about. There's a huge amount, um, of revenue that comes from CoreLogic and another vendor that pays from escrowed taxes.
Okay, so, um, if we collect, if we collect half, so we're owed right now for the fourth quarter of, um, one point one, one point two million dollars. If we collect half of that, well, with, with these other, with the other revenue sources, we'll be pretty much at the six hundred seventy thousand dollars that we need to get, that, that we need to, uh, get through June, um, a- and, and avoid this stuff here. Now, um, you know, the, I think, I'm still working on the last, our reconciliation is not completely. We're working on the last couple of months. So this number I think is low, our beginning cash balance, because I'm just going off of what's in the bank, what was in the bank. Um, but that, I, I believe, I believe this number is low. And I believe these numbers are low as well because Morgan just collected a bunch today. And I believe that our department heads are doing a phenomenal job saving money as well. So these, all these costs here, a lot, most of them are averages throughout the year.
So they're going to change.
Yeah, I, I think our department heads are doing the great job saving. So I, I think our costs will be lower, our revenues will be higher. So this, again, this is a conservative estimation that we need six hundred seventy thousand dollars. Um, but I think in reality, we need lower than that.
You'll update this for the next meeting too?
Absolutely. Yeah, I'm updating it every day.
What about the school payments? What, what's going to happen with that?
Yeah, so this, this has the school payments in there. It's right here.
I know, but do, is, are we, uh?
Yeah, I, we've, I talked to the school, there's not much flexibility there. I mean, they say, um, that you don't have to pay the delinquent taxes, right? So, uh, so let's say, you know, let, let's say of the seven hundred eighty-one thousand that we have to pay them, we only collect five hundred thousand. So we don't have to pay the two, two hundred eighty-one thousand until the end of this fiscal year. So that only gives us like twenty days. I mean, even delinquent, we have to pay in full by the end of the fiscal year, the statute reads. There's really, there's really not much flexibility. This, there's an eight percent penalty if you don't, if you don't pay on time and we can't, we certainly can't afford to get hit with that. This incorporates that payment in here. So if we make, again, if we get six hundred seventy thousand dollars, which pretty much represents fifty percent collection for the quarter, um, then we'll be able to make that payment. I think, well, I think, um, I talked to some other municipalities that had due dates um, at the beginning of, at the very beginning of May, and they, their collections have been like eighty-seven percent. Um, so I, I'm, I'm optimistic that, that some of these will come in just la- later than normal. But if they don't, I, I'm certainly watching, um, uh, just in case we, I, I have to sound the alarm. Let's, yeah, that's, uh, that's the cash flow. And that really, that concludes. Uh, yeah, any other questions, guys?
Thank you. Good job.
Yeah, thank you for that, Daniel.
Excellent job.
Thank you. Yeah, so next, uh, next meeting, we'll have another budget workshop. Just to reiterate and, um, you know, we'll, we'll pass something you guys are very comfortable with.
Great, thank you. Now we'll move on to your report.
Um, I will turn it over. So I, I, I'm going to try something different here. I'm going to have the department heads give a quick update. Um, I, I think what I'll do is I'll do the finance report at the first council meeting of the month, second council meeting of the month. I'll, I'll turn it over to the department heads mainly. So with that, uh, Jim, you want to give a quick update?
Sure. Um, so the guys were, um, Pat, Matt, Dan, you know, Dan and, um, Nelson were very happy to be back to work last Tuesday. And they also were very grateful what the city did for them the last four weeks. I wanted to start with that. Um, we are in the cleanup mode. Um, seeing our budget has been froze, um, which I also agree is a good idea at this time. Um, we feel that we can get everything cleaned up that the kids normally take care of. And we are going to try to do that. The only place we might not get to, and Daniel and I have been discussing, and I've got some prices. I'm going to be talking to them about some quotes from landscaping companies to take care of the basin on the west side of Otter Creek, along the falls where the parking area is and the boat launch. Um, we might have that done by landscaping company. But anytime it hasn't rained, the guys have been out cleaning. They've already got the park done. They have the library done. They have the police station done, the firehouse done, city hall done. And today they started working on the cemetery. Um, so we're going to get all that done and we'll just go from there for now. Um, and I guess that's about it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. That's great. Chief Merkel. Uh, faintly.
Been working on grants for the last one year. Uh, you're working primarily at the governor's highway safety grants. Uh, these grants cover a number of different things. Uh, the traffic safety coordinator position, which is the position Mark stations in. Uh, we also have a grant for distracted driving. And we also have a grant for, uh, speed and D Y. And the penalty grant comes through three hundred forty-nine thousand and over twenty dollars. I expect to get about three hundred thousand dollars from the grant. Along with those grants, the work that we do, we're going to be buying two new Speed Zone, solar powered Speed Zone signs. zones, all powered speed zone signs. One on the one who lived in road, and the other one on Tan Road. It's in all parts of the city. Uh, as I mentioned before, we got twenty-six thousand Department of Homeland Security grant coming in. And, uh, we have a five thousand dollar, we're not leaving the city in pounds grant for starting our body camera program. Uh, August, Officer Terabash is going to the academy for sixteen weeks, depending on the situation. Um, we've been working on gumpdo.com.net to sell our old personal. And, uh, and, excuse us, excuse that phone. It's great to have a coupon box right next to your, um, gumpdo.net. You're selling a bunch of other used equipment. So that's where we stand right now.
Thanks, Chief.
Priceless, Chief. Priceless.
Chief Brewer. Chief Brewer?
Hello?
Hey. You're up. Hello? No. Hey, Rick, do you want to, Rick, do you want to go overhead? We'll, we'll jump over Chief Brewer. I don't know if he's with us.
Yeah, sure. Uh, can you hear me?
Yeah, we got you.
Okay, great. Um, we were supposed to start our sludge removal, uh, this month. Uh, we put that on hold. That's the big project. Uh, we have made, uh, arrangements with Town of Middlebury to bring some of our sludge. The sludge that's actually in that tank that Dexter referred to, uh, that's going to start going to Middlebury next Friday. Um, let's see what else. Uh, last week, we did testing at our land applications site behind Job Corps of for, uh, it's a chemical, goes by the acronym PFAS, P-F-A-S. You can look it up. It's a chemical compound, polyfluoralkyl. It's a group of compounds. I don't believe we're going to have any problem with it. I do have a little concern with our waste coming from UTC. The chemical is found in fire retardants and, uh, um, non-stick coatings and things like that. So, uh, don't expect any problems. Hopefully we, we don't get anything there. Um, other than that, it's, uh, spring turnover now at the plant. The lagoons are coming alive and, uh, starting to, um, get ready for summer.
Thanks, Rick. Um, Abby could not be with us today. So, uh, Morgan, do you want to give us a quick briefing?
Sure. So, um, obviously we were doing some property tax collection. Today I collected around twenty-six, twenty-seven thousand dollars in property taxes. The remainder of the forty-eight thousand dollar deposit I did today was all sewer assessments. Um, land record recording is down a bit, but now that city hall is reopening a little bit, I expect that that will go up some as people can do more title searches. I came in to do a title update today. I've been doing some title, well, title work, uh, for attorneys who have people who have, who are refinancing and only need a quick little title updates. I'm helping them out and, uh, crazers getting registered cards and things.
I hope you charge them a lot of money, Morgan.
I know, right? Yeah, now, um, so yeah, I try to do those things as quickly as possible, um, while I'm in the office. Um, what else is going on? Uh, dog licenses, um, those have slowed down quite a bit. I, uh, plan to do a, a report to see which dogs I have remaining to get licensed. I know that the, the late fees, we're not collecting late fees right now. Um, so I think maybe a lot of folks are just, you know, just waiting to maybe get their dogs vaccinated. They may not be able to get in right now to, uh, their registration because their rabies has expired. Um, so, but I think we're doing okay on that front. It's just slowed down dramatically in the last week or so, but otherwise, um, it's going pretty well.
Great. Uh, Chief Brewer, are you back with us?
Yeah.
Do you want to give a quick, quick report? What, what you got going on in the fire department? Chief? I don't know what's happening here. All right. I guess we'll, uh, Mr. Mary, yeah, I guess that's it.
Great. Thank you. Uh, I'll keep it very short tonight. I simply want to thank every one of our city employees who have been absolutely amazing. Uh, city manager Hoffman has been doing an incredible job. And I thank Morgan for her perseverance and Abby for their perseverance and everyone else who is, has helped us through this. So thank you everyone for that. And with that said, I will ask for a motion. LOL.
I will make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Thank you, everybody. Great to see your faces.
Thank you.
Take care. Good night.